Okay, 6:30. First open public meeting for site plan application for 29 June Street. Map 352 parcel 6, multi-family development. Viper representative.
Good evening. For the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering representing the applicant.
Bill, can you speak into your mic?
I did. Ready?
Go ahead.
All right. So, the applicant's June Street LLC. Steve Boucher is here representing the applicant as well, along with me is Dominic Elaine from my office who did the work on the project. So, the property is located at 29 June Street. It's presently a former factory building of which is partially collapsed. So, it's in its last stage of functionality. It's used, being used a little bit right now for some warehouse storage, but aside from that, it's being slated for demolition, which would happen upon approval of the project. The project we're proposing is to allow the construction of some residential units on the property. On the plan, we show, if you look at the plan, there are nine units that are highlighted. On the lower left, there's one building that's a duplex, but only one of the units is highlighted. The reason for that is we're just short of the land area for the 10th unit. So, the whole project has been designed for the 10 units, but we would have to acquire some land from one of the abutters, which is being sought after right now to get that 10th unit. But the drainage analysis, the parking analysis, and everything has been based upon the 10 units for the development.
Mr. Hannigan, you talking about this right here?
Yes, I am, yeah. So, under the presumption that we don't get the additional land and the permit would end up being for the nine units that are, we would like the permit to be for 10 units, but if only nine can be developed under zoning, then that's all we would actually create. Okay? So, each of the buildings is, I have a rendering of the building, and the architect has informed me, please disregard the colors of the building. He picked much better colors for the building, but this is kind of the generic colors that they end up having on the buildings. So, each duplex would have its own garage. It had an entry from the grade that would then go up to the first level, which is the main living level, with the bedrooms being set on the second level of the building. So, each unit has its own complete living space. There's no shared space between the units, et cetera, but each building would be built the same way with, you know, you have a left unit on the right. On the lower right, you can see the layout of the site on the bottom. I guess the bottom, we just show the layout of the site basically from the backside, and we can switch back to the site plan to show the parking area that we're creating, which we're creating a parking area that will be for additional parking for these three buildings and another parking area that would be additional parking for these two buildings, presuming that the 10th was incorporated within the design. Each unit has a single parking space right in front of the garage, along with the garage space. The board in the past has not permitted us to count both spaces, so we've counted them individually as one space with sufficient parking that would add to that to the left in this area and to the south in this area for the total parking requirement being met within the, for the zoning. The utilities are shown. There's a water line that goes up June Street, and ironically, there's no hydrant on June Street. It's actually up on the next street, which I believe is Dudley. So, what we're proposing to do is loop a water line through the property and add a hydrant at this location right here, so that if in event the fire department needed to come to the site and they needed to drop a hose, they would be dropping it on the way into the area to be able to utilize that hydrant for any fire protection purposes. These buildings will not be sprinkled because there are two units per building versus three, so that's why we provided that extra hydrant for that protection. The domestic water will be fed off of that same line into each of the buildings. Domestic sewer would come out of the buildings and connect to these gravities who remain within the street. And then, the onsite drainage system consists of a series of catch basins and yard drains that would drain to some infiltration area in between the buildings in this area right here, along with eventually the use of a drainage basin down in the south corner of the property. The layout eliminates the curb openings on Viscaloid Avenue, as well as modifies and repositions the curb openings that are on June Street, most of which are at this point just wide-open curbing. So, there'd be a dedicated entry in this location here for these two buildings, another dedicated entry in this area here for these three buildings, once again with the parking provided. Relative to waste disposal, we have an area for dumpster pad in this lower-left area here, along with another dumpster pad in this area here, so that each unit, each complex of buildings would be able to have their own facilities. Landscaping is provided around the perimeter of the site. Generally, it's basically generally going to be foundation shrubs around the buildings and then some trees along the perimeter of the property to enhance the landscaping that's there, which really is not much at all. The only area we can't provide landscaping near the property line is in this area here because of existing utility wires that are in this area here that we can't really grow trees underneath. Lighting, we did ask for a waiver during the lighting. We did provide a photometric plan. However, in this situation, instead of providing the level of lighting of one-foot candle in the entire site, we're just focusing that on the parking areas within the property and to try to keep the light at the perimeter of the property where there are other residential uses in the area, so that we're not overlighting the site from that perspective. We've also requested a waiver for landscaping, the landscape plan being prepared by a landscape architect, which is a relatively simple landscape project for the project, and we are providing a sufficient number of trees relative to the number of parking spaces. That's the site review and utility review. Snow storage is being provided and is demarked on the plan. It's in excess of 20% right now versus 5%, which is required by the ordinance. And the other aspect of the project that we haven't talked about yet is the traffic. Based upon the previous use and the current use, obviously, the previous use is significantly reduced from what it was when it was actually operational, but the traffic is not anticipated to be burdensome to the area as it is relatively low, limited traffic relative to the number of residential units, condominiums, or townhouses that we're saying. In here, in the letter we submitted, that the ITE manual is based upon a unit or project size for around 180 units. That's kind of their formula, is based upon having that many units. Obviously, we have significantly less than that. If we did it by the ITE manual, the count would come up to be 87 trips per day, which is not really reasonable, so we're saying that there'd be approximately more like 40 to 50 trips a day for 10 units, four or five trips per day per unit potentially, figuring after doing this. Relative to the special permit, the first part is proposals, who to be located in neighborhood. This area is a mix of old industrial and residential with some newer office space to the north of the property, so...
Will we open up the special permit?
No.
Okay. I'll stop now then.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing for a special permit application for use of 29 June Street, map 352 parcel 6, multi-family development.
Okay. For the record, Bill Hannigan representing the applicant.
Okay.
So, on the special permit end of things, the criteria is that the proposal is who to be located within the neighborhood, which is proposed. This is, as stated before, we're right on the line between RB and industrial, I believe it is, or maybe MU. No, it is industrial. So, you're right at that edge. Matter of fact, the applicant had the zoning line shifted to allow this development to happen because it was split zone before, so it's now all RB. The residential uses around us are pretty much single-family, some multi- and some duplex configurations, so it's very similar to the neighborhood, and we are on the edge of what, of an industrial area that's really historically industrial, but not as industrial as it used to be in this area. So, we feel that it's a very good area for this project. Proposal compatible with existing uses and other uses permitted by right in the same district. As stated, we are in an area of RB zoning with other RB uses, duplexes, and single-family homes in the area, so we feel that that's consistent with that. The proposal would not constitute nuisance due to air and waterproof and flood noise, dust, vibration, lice, or visually offensive structures. And aside from the color of the buildings and the architect, that is planned, we feel that we're not going to have any impact on those items or have any adverse effect relative to those items. That proposal would not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters vehicles or pedestrians. As part of the overall site layout, the vehicles all pull off the street. We've eliminated the access to the site from Viscaloid Avenue, which really is more of a high-speed corridor than June Street is, so all the vehicles will come in and out of the site via June Street. So, and all of the parking is able to back out onto the driveways, but not back out onto the streets, so that's consistent with the requirements of the regulation and accounts for making sure that we're not creating any inconvenience or hazard to abutters vehicles or pedestrians. We are also providing a sidewalk. The sidewalk along Viscaloid Avenue was partially reconstructed recently with one of the, I think it was a Mastioti grant. We're going to basically rebuild the sidewalk area where the existing driveway was off of Viscaloid, current and consistent with what was built on Viscaloid. We want to be continuing that around June Street, so there's actually a pedestrian sidewalk that's going to be created on June Street, which would bring pedestrians down to Viscaloid. There are a lot of amenities in the area that they would be able to walk to. The adequate appropriate facilities would be provided for proper operation of both use, and as we discussed earlier, the building in site amenities relative to utilities and drainage have been provided on the property. The reason we protect adjoining premises in a possible detrimental offensive use of the site, including unsightly or obnoxious parents. Basically, the building that's there right now is, we figured that some brand-new residential landscape around it would be less offensive than what's there right now, so that's really how that plays out. So, the buildings are also set back from the property lines to the rear or to the south by the setback versus being right on the property line, which is where the building is right now. Okay? So, they're actually providing more of a setback on the southerly side of the property.
How many feet, Bill, on the side where you point, how many feet from there to, let's say, not the building, but...
To the property line?
Yeah. I mean, how many feet do we have there? You've got a bunch of abutters here, right?
Yeah.
How many feet from here, let's say this building comes to fruition?
Hold on, let me stick on here. So, right now, the setback, I just wanted to see the setback line. So, right now, the setback line is shown in that area is about 10 feet right here, so it's close to 30, yeah.
Close to 30?
Yeah.
And how about to the parking?
Probably about 20.
So, you know that you have the parking even right into the neighborhood on Longwood, you know, you're going to have to mitigate that somehow?
Sure, we can add some additional landscape...
Well, you're going to, you know, maybe some fencing, some high fencing with some abutters, something to buffer it.
You know what? In looking at this, in looking at, actually, how, so, in looking at this, if you look at the wall, the low side of the wall is where the lights would be, would be, so the snow storage area is actually at a lower elevation. It's at about 110, okay? And the top of the wall is at 114 in this area and 116 in this area. So, these cars parking are going to, the lights are going to go into the wall and not into the neighborhood. The neighborhood area is above it.
But it'll shine up a little bit, though.
A little bit. Diminimus.
You know?
Diminimus.
Something to mitigate that.
Right. So, if you also notice that we were providing a solid wall fence all the way around the backside of the property. So, on top of the wall and around the perimeter in this area here, we're providing a solid wall fence.
That's good.
Okay.
That's good to highlight, to tell people.
Right.
And the dumpster, you know, can you find a better place than up against the neighborhood? Can you find a place maybe more toward Viscaloid Avenue for the dumpster?
Not without, not without good access.
Behind, behind the solid wall, on top of the wall?
Well, the wall, the wall itself is six, five feet, and then the fence on top of that, that would be a six-foot fence. So, you get 11 feet between the property line and the end where the dumpster pad area is.
Yeah. Well, the dumpster's going to be enclosed anyway, right?
Correct. I don't know of any dumpster company that picks up trash at night.
They don't pick up the trash.
Yep. We can, we can coordinate that. All right. The proposal ensures that it is conformant to the sign regulations. There are no signs proposed, aside from traffic signage for stop signs and for handicap accessibility and parking signs. The sides are typically between, you know, six and eight feet above grade for stop signs that are set off the roadway, and I don't believe that we have any signage that would require anything more than a sign permit for building parking for naming the development or naming it as two acres or something like that. But that would be a building permit tied into the graph. The proposal provides convenience, safety, and safety within the site. We talked about that. It ensures adequate off, sorry, aggregate space for offloading and unloading of vehicles, goods, product materials. You really got no goods, parts, and materials. Moving days, the trucks will probably drive up June Street and back into the site, unload and then leave the site. They do have the ability to drive in this area here and turn around. It'll hide around this side, but that's typically, that's once or twice a year, once they're occupied, that would be, I think that would be actually high, because these are anticipated to be rental units and or for sale units that would be occupied for some time. Once again, we talked about dumpsters, we just talked about a little bit more, and stormwater is directed towards here. The catch basin is located in the parking area, right over between the buildings. We talked about that. That's been reviewed by DPW, and I don't know if there are any comments regarding that. It is, the project is not within the flood plain, so that's one of the other items. And then, the last one is the project ensures protective water, probably both the public and private supplies. Once again, there aren't no public water supplies in this area, but the stormwater is provided relative to TSS and caution for the project. So, that's really it for the items that were in the original application. We did receive some comments back from the department heads, which I don't know if Elizabeth did, you want to go through those, or do you want me to just cut on them?
You can go through them, or if Carol likes to read them.
You can, because you have, you have your response.
Right. So, we provided a response to that. So, the building code, so basically, the assessor said that the building code requirements in Madison's department had no issue with the project. For help, demolition and the testing structure requires a special survey, road inspections. Department has had previous focus in the building. We're acknowledging that, that we understand that, and obviously, those are our demo permit checklist to get that taken care of, and that we have municipal water and sewer. Building has no comments. Conservation said there are no jurisdictions in the area of the site, no conservation filing is needed. DPW, they reviewed and said that the drain between building three and the property line, they recommended a swale to keep it runoff, avoid the foundation, and we have, we have made that change, I believe that that's in this area here to...
Bill, do you want to move that mic a little closer, or is your mouse just in here?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we've had some additional grading in this area here, which has been shown on the most updated plans. Fire had no comments, police had no comments, wiring inspector had no comments, and then the planning director had her comments. Talking about the parking, and it was a discussion back and forth about how many parking spaces are available in the project. Based upon our review, and I think we talked about this with, Chris and mine office talked about it with Elizabeth, and it's depending upon how you count them, there's 19 spaces on the property plus nine garage spaces on the nine unit plan if we add the 10th unit.
You can't count garages.
No, I understand that, but there's 19 on the plan right now excluding garages.
Okay.
Okay. And there's, if we were to add the 10th unit, we would have another parking space in front of that garage. So, we're not counting the garage, but we're acknowledging that the garages are there.
Okay.
And the lighting diagram, once again, we did submit the lighting plan, and we did, we did talk about it, we've asked for a waiver relative to the lighting.
What is your lighting, okay?
So, the lighting was, we don't want to, basically, we don't want to overlight the area.
Yeah, but what do you got at the periphery?
The periphery is, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's less than one.
Are you at half?
It's less than one.
Less than one.
Right. So, we're trying to keep one in the parking areas, okay?
Right.
We don't want, if we have one in the parking areas, that means we have to be at four, or five, or seven in the internal park, which is basically just light up the sky. So, and we did this on a couple of other projects, trying to keep that, that number down. Most recently, probably Pleasant Street, I guess, we did the same thing.
Okay, my plan is really swell here. Are these on poles or are they on the buildings?
No, they're off the buildings.
They're all on buildings, so they don't...
Yeah, I think there's one, there might be one on a pole.
There's no light going into the...
Yeah, I can't...
Right. There's, there's two on a pole right near the parking area. There's one in this location right here, if you look at the, on the screen. There's one right there, and I believe that there's going to be one in this area as well.
And how high are those?
They'd be like seven to nine feet.
Oh, okay.
They're not high, they're not, they're not poles.
They're not, they're not...
They're not 30 foot, yeah, they're residential, kind of like...
Residential lighting?
Correct.
At seven or nine, okay.
Yeah. Me, I should say nine, probably nine to 12, no, everybody...
Yeah, that's okay, yeah.
But they're not 30 foot, they're not typical parking lot lighting.
Okay. That's why I wanted to double check. So, you're doing that, you're lighting, and your fence is at 11, right?
It's 11 on top of a five-foot wall.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, it's five.
Yeah, total of 11.
Yeah, 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 total of 11.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Any other questions?
Well, I'll open it up to the audience. Do I have anyone in the audience that has any questions on this project?
I am Carrie Chacony.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, just like Bill, these mics are not that good, so you really have to talk into them.
I'm Carrie Chacony, 22 Longwood Ave. I apologize in advance that this will take a little bit longer than two minutes to read, but I promise that this benefits the project and us. I am representing my family here, who has owned and occupied the property, wait a second. That's better. Owned and occupied the property since the 1920s that is abutting the northwest corner. I am the fifth generation here, and my family has been here for 100 years. This is not an objection to development, but rather a list of concerns we have, which we hope you will consider in moving forward. This is the main home of my extended family. This is where we garden, spend our summers, have family reunions and cookouts. We're outside daily and enjoy our yard. The current factory is less than 10 feet from my great-grandmother's still very protective old grapevines. Now, moving on to the concerns, toxicity. Toxicity that might be released when disturbing the ground during demolition and construction. The chemicals used in that factory were toxic, not only during use, but after they closed down. Our cats were always coming home, new rainbow-stained fur, from walking around the back of the factory. One cat died from a rare cancerous tumor in the 80s, and only five years ago, another one of our cats met the same fate. We must insist that the soil be tested and demolition dust be contained. We've spent thousands of dollars over the years mending the soil so it could grow grass and support a garden, as it used to just be an awful dry patch of dust that couldn't even absorb water. Erosion. June Street and the factory are significantly lower than our yard. We need assurance that some of, some sort of strong retaining wall with proper drainage will be included in the plans moving forward. All of the water runs in from the gas station on Lancaster Street, around the corner, and down Dudley Street, rounding the corner again on the Longwood Ave. A large amount of this ends up directly in our side yard and floods during storms. This is why there.
We're at 10 minutes.
Washout on Viscloide Ave, behind the factory during the flood of September 2023. Which brings me to the trees. We have many large trees that abut the factory. These trees, along with the factory, have assuredly kept our house and yard from washing onto June Street. Some of these trees are so large and old that they are on both properties. Some trees we may be okay with losing, some we are not. Besides holding our yard in place, these trees provide shade, privacy, reduction of noise light, and wind, as well as providing habitat. Privacy, we're concerned about light and noise coming from behind our house. Our bedrooms are in the back. In fact, it's the only dark place without streetlights where we can see the stars. We're concerned about the loss of darkness and privacy. It wouldn't be very relaxing to have windows overlooking our backyard or lights shining in our bedrooms. Lastly, we have crowding and traffic. This is already becoming a rapidly growing issue. There are cars parked all along our street, and children already play in the road. People speed down our street to avoid the lights at the corner of Viscloide and Lancaster. This will only be exacerbated by proposed developments of the DuPont factories and the former Gondola restaurant site. I respectfully request that the planning board will consider these points during your deliberation. I encourage the board to ensure that the applicant fully addresses these concerns to mitigate the potential overbearing impact on the surrounding properties and community. Thank you for your time and allowing me to provide testimony.
Thank you very much.
I, I think that we've addressed most of those comments in our, in our presentation, basically relative to light and, and traffic and utilities and drainage. We're actually draining from southwest to northeast, towards Viscloide. So all of our water from our site does not go back towards, Longwood actually heads down towards the corner of June and, and Viscloide. Regarding the building and what's in the building, I, I believe that we've already had a 21E done on the property, which came back fine. However, it's noted that during demolition, there will need to be taken some care relative to, as they're tearing things down and making sure that they're appropriate.
So in, during the process, you'll be testing the ground?
No, we've already tested the ground.
You've already tested it?
Right, right. So, am I correct, Steve?
Yes.
So the, the demolition process has its own requirements, both from Board of Health and from.
Right.
Building Department. They'll be in asbestos survey, which may have already happened, actually. Yeah. And they'll, so as they demo the building, they have to meet all those requirements for, for demolition of the building itself. During demolition, they also have dust control measures that they need to take care of. That's typically done with, with hosing down, you know, providing water to, to keep the dust down, et cetera. So that's not something that's unusual in the, in the construction industry for demolition of projects. As far as the trees along the property line go, I'm not sure what trees we can, we can save. We are going right up to the property line essentially with the construction, because we need to tear the building down. And the building is very close to the property line right now, so we're gonna need to be, be tearing a lot of those down. I know that we're not taking down any trees on anyone else's property, I know that much. But we are providing, when we're done, we're providing a solid wall fence for a buffer, and this is one of the reasons why we asked for the waiver on the lighting, to reduce the lighting on the site to not impact the abutters at the property line. Typically, your typical requirement is that we have one foot candle at the property line, and I think that's supposed to, that's intended to be no more than one candle, foot candle.
Right.
Versus a minimum of one foot candle. So we're just, it's not clear within the regulation, so that's why we're asking for the waiver, that we, we go down to zero essentially if we have to, and minimize the amount of lighting on the property. So I think, I think that we've addressed those issues, other issues relative to the building and what's going on with that, with the demolition process is handled through, through the building department.
Bill, can you go over, you know, erosion control a little bit? How you're gonna prevent, you know, if those root systems are helping hold up land there, you're gonna have a wall there. Can you, tell me about the erosion control?
Well, when you do an excavation, the erosion control is really not near, in that, the particular case, the erosion control wouldn't be near the property line, it would be down on the other end to prevent it from going off the site, okay? And since we're going downhill from, from southwest to northeast, the erosion control would be at the northeast end of the site. So as they're excavating and removing trees and removing the foundation essentially during that period, they're gonna be careful to make sure that they, they don't dislodge a tree that causes a problem. That's gonna be something that we're gonna take a look at during the construction phase. But at the end of the day, we're proposing slopes along that, along that property line that are not excessive. They're, they're two to one, maybe three to one in some areas, so they're not, they're not even one-to-one vertical slopes, slopes or stuff like that. So, you know, where we do need a wall, we're, we're building one. So we're, we're providing that mechanism, that's in the area that I'm pointing at the screen right now. That's, that's where the wall is right now. So in these areas here, we don't need that, that retaining system in place to make sure that we meet the grades. Part of the reason is that the grade of, of the, the grade of the driveway is lower than the grade around the, the building, because the, this is, essentially, this will walk out at the first floor level, okay? So there's a full story of, of elevation between the driveways and where the, the backside of the buildings are.
So the elevation over here is what, 114, 118? I can read, looks like it.
Yeah, it's one, it's, it's, it's probably about 1.
You're 118 at the property line?
Yeah, 118, 117 in that area there, on that building, on that building three. And at the property line, it's 118 as well, but in between, we're, we're lowering basically from this corner right here, we're probably at about, say, 117.5. And then from, we go down to 116, 114, 112, and then 110 at the garage.
And then what's your drainage at the road?
The drainage is handled through a swale system, being, bringing water to this area here for a swale. Catch basin right here, this is all pitched this way. And a catch basin right here, this is all pitched this way down here. So we're pitching everything towards June Street for the entire site for drainage.
Bill, what's the elevation, you know, the rest of the way down with the other neighbors?
Right here, this is 124, okay? And the grade in front of this garage is 120, so it's, it's four feet lower.
How, so?
So your drainage is all towards?
All going towards June Street, correct?
Right, all June Street, okay.
Is Longwood Ave higher?
Longwood Ave is higher, yeah.
It's higher.
On that end.
Okay, so everything's gonna drain from Longwood Avenue towards, towards June Street?
Correct. Well, from the back of, the back of our property towards June Street, I can't.
The back of your property.
I can't speak to what happens on, on the abutters, on June, on Longwood Ave, because.
No, no, I'm not looking at.
But I, but I, from the testimony that was given, it appears that it comes from that same southwest side, and then goes down Dudley and, and Longwood.
Right.
Around them, so.
Okay.
Liz McCorlla, 75, Harvard Street. I just have a few comments, and I wanted to start by saying I appreciate the detail that's in this plan, and I appreciate your ability to speak to all of that detail, and I do think you're really trying to walk a balance here with concern for the abutters. That being said, I think there are probably some ways to improve that and address your concerns, ma'am. I wanted to address the light poles first. I happen to live next to somebody who just installed eight-foot poles all along our shared property line, and they're very, very bright. And eight-foot poles are, they're tough. So I think there's a really big difference between the seven to nine-foot poles you were saying might be in those parking lots and a nine to 12. I would really want a foot stomp that the top of those lights go below the top of the fencing that you'd propose, because I think anything other is going to be very disturbing to the neighbors. The existing vegetation along that line, I wonder if a site walk could be done to review those trees and take a look at each one and address the abutters' concerns. I think that might go a long way toward building some goodwill and seeing what we can do. I know that it is possible to take down a building and maintain trees that are nearby, so I don't believe that's really an impediment. I think it might just be a question of will. And the, what those trees will do for the existing drainage and retaining the soil is really not something that can be replicated easily. Not wholesale. You can put in retaining walls, but you're then losing the value that the trees and the old growth trees are gonna be giving to those properties. And I think it's worth taking a little time and considering what can be saved and what makes sense to save. I also just have a concern in general about the lack of green space I'm seeing on this plan. I don't know if we're planning to have children in these buildings, but I would assume that there's certainly potential for that, and I don't know where they're gonna play. I'm not sure that the site plan was really optimized for use of the green space outdoors. And I kind of wish that the parking was more located towards the busier streets, with the headlights pointing towards those streets, and some thought to clustering the buildings a little bit better, so you had some open green space that everyone could use, and, which could then also provide some buffer between the adjacent residents and this new development. And that brings me to buffers in general, and whether there's any buffer required or thought to be requested for the abutting properties. Maybe we can stay a little bit further back and provide some green space at the same time, and just shift how we're, how we are laying out the parking on this site. I just feel like there might be some ways to improve things for the residents who would be going in to these buildings, as well as the existing residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I think, I think what the person made the comments doesn't, is not taken into consideration is that the current use of the property is an industrial building that's built essentially for the entire block. So we, we have taken into consideration a lot of the items that she's brought up, and I did want to make a point about the lighting. The height of the lighting is really somewhat immaterial to the discussion because of the fact that the, the lighting photometric study that we did is based, is to, is to determine how much light we're gonna have on the ground in these particular areas. The height of the light that she may be talking about, maybe, maybe, there was probably not a lighting study done for, you know, a series of eight-foot lights along the driveway that may not, may not be shielded. These lights will be shielded, which is part of the requirement for down, for night sky compliance, and downward lighting is one of those requirements. This will comply with that. These lights will comply with that. So that, there is a difference.
Yeah, one lumen on the lighting is very low.
Right. So I, I appreciate the comments. The, the open space part, I mean, there's a lot of green space on this property that is not there right now, that's really the delta. This is not intended to be a, have a playground there, there's a, there's, we're right down the street from Southeast School, or, or whatever the name of it is now, we'll go to the southeast, but there's a playground area.
Francis Drake.
Francis Drake, there's a, you know, a swimming pool, a public pool, just at the street. So there are amenities in the area, and a lot of these developments that we're working with are, are trying to make use of those various amenities as well, and have to provide additional housing. Putting parking on the street is something that is, is not accepted by the city. You can put, put four spaces backing out onto a road, but if we did have the parking on the street, the park, I'm confused about that comment, because the lights would not shine towards the street, because you're pulling into a, a parking space that's facing the buildings at that point in time. So they would be facing the same direction, just behind the buildings. The majority of the people parking in these, at this site will be parking in the garage or in front of the garage, and then visitor spaces, the visitors will be more or less using the parking that's around the periphery. So I'm comfortable with, with the parking the way we've done it. I'm comfortable with the elevations that are being placed in the plan, which, which minimize and, if not eliminate, the ability for, for headlight traffic to, or headlight from the cars to, to come to the neighbors, because of the, of the drop in elevation between the back, between the 124 in the back and, and 120 in the area of the parking. We are also putting, once again, a perimeter fence, solid wall fence around the entire, entire property abutting, all of residential areas. So I think that that provides, you would normally ask for these things, and they wouldn't be on the plan, we're providing these things up, up front on the project.
And this is residential B.
Correct.
Which allows a denser situation.
Correct.
These are, these are two-bedroom units?
I think they're three, two, no, they're two, they're two-bedroom units.
Two-bedroom on the first floor.
Yeah. Right, I think, I think the parking allows three. Parking requirement allows three bedrooms per, in the units. I think, I think there's a two-bedroom, and then there can be a, a third bedroom on the ground floor, on the ground, on the ground space by the architectures. If I go to this here.
Three bedrooms, you, you have to have two spots, right?
Two, two per unit.
Two per unit.
Right, for nine, for nine units, you'd need 18, you have 19, and for the 10th unit, we'd have the 20th space. Correct.
Okay. Do I have anyone else from the audience?
Donna Mallett, 58, Skyline.
Okay, you're next.
Sorry about that.
I was just curious to see if the stormwater had been peer reviewed.
Uh, it's not, how do you answer that?
Well, the stormwater is, is redevelopment, so there are differences between a new development stormwater. I don't know if, I think the DPW has reviewed the stormwater, but I don't know if it's been peer reviewed, but I'm not really sure if it was. Because of the way the stormwater management ordinance works, this would go in front of the DPW, not in front of DEP, for example, or Conservation. So there's two different standards, but the stormwater management regulations of the state are what the Stormwater Authority and the City of Limerick utilizes for their reviews, and we're compliant with those requirements.
Okay. Excuse me, sir, did you want to say something?
Hello, my name is John Chaconi, and I, my sister came up and spoke before, I'm also from 22 Longwood Ave. And just a comment about the parcel that's next to our house, which is owned by the electric company, I believe. That not only, farther side. When it rains, it turns into a little lake.
Okay.
You know, so when we're thinking about the water runoff, and obviously pitching towards Viscloide, again, that retaining wall, or whatever vegetation is there that is soaking up that water, is pretty critical just to the erosion. So I think it's important that we ensure, not just verbal assurance, but like actually some kind of, something enforceable to ensure that before this is approved, that really we understand how erosion affects that hill.
Is there erosion back there now?
It's, it's a weird slope to a factory wall, you know? And I would argue that that factory wall is probably holding up that, that bank as much as it is. And I think the other comment too, especially in the context of lighting, is, you know, is a six-foot wall tall enough? I mean, I don't know what our regulations are and how wall, how tall walls can be within the city, but I think if there's something taller.
They're maxed out at that height.
They're maxed out at six.
Is that, is that just fence? The fence is six feet.
No, the, the wall, I believe, is four or five feet. And it, so the wall is limited to one area.
Right.
Which is right here, okay? So let's, let's talk about that, that first, but let's back up to what's existing right now. The existing building wall is right along the property line, probably, probably about 10 feet, if, if not less.
It's right, it's right close, I was.
Right, yeah. So, so what we're talking about is right now, the, these properties here drain right to the back of the wall, and the wall, the water then goes around the building somehow, okay? So if water pools up, are you saying it pools up on the mass electric property?
Yeah, on the mass electric property, yeah.
Right, and then it drains this way afterwards.
Exactly.
Is that higher or lower than you? What's the elevation?
Longwood is higher.
Right, so this, this elevation here.
That lot, the side, is that higher?
It's the same height, the same height.
Right. So.
How high, Bill?
It's, this is the 24, one is.
124.
Down to 20, right?
Right, so it drops four feet under proposed conditions. Right now, it may not, it may get, it may be being held up there. So the idea is that the water from here would now be allowed to flow over this driveway and get down into this catch basin, and then get down into the drainage system of Viscloide Avenue. So right now, this, this should improve the situation in here. And that, does this water back up onto your land at all?
It definitely seeps in the basement, yeah.
Well, seeping in the basement is something we, we can't. Well, seeping in the basement is something we, we can't take care of.
Yeah.
Okay? But we can't, we can't do anything on this property without permission of Mass Electric. So, but right now, under existing conditions, whatever's happening over here is happening. Okay? When we take the building out, what we have to make sure is that we don't back it up so it, so it gets worse.
Yeah.
But this elevation now is going to be going downhill this whole way. So it, it should then flow and continue to flow, possibly even better than it is now. There's nothing blocking it. There's no building there going to be blocking it. Okay? And that, that, so any flow from this property line essentially, if you look at it, anything in this area is going to go down to this catch basin. Anything in this area here is going to be split between this yard drain, I'm sorry, this yard drain down here and be directed around here over to this catch basin here. The idea is that we want to make sure we take the water that's from above our site. We're going to have a reduction in impervious area because of the fact that the building is much bigger than it, than the impervious area we're creating.
Right.
And we're going to be treating that water by directing that portion of it over to this basin here over land. That'll then discharge and then a portion of it to the couple of catch basins and yard drains or this little infiltration drain here. And then that'll all be connected to the drain system. So capturing of the water, part of, part of drainage issues that sometimes occur is when there's nothing capturing the water. Right now, with the wall of the building sitting right there, it's backing it up so it doesn't have any place to go. When we're, when we're done and we take the wall off, now that whole property line, all that water can flow over it, down into the property, and we're picking it up within the catch basins that we're proposing on the project. Okay? Maybe not the 100% answer you're looking for, but that's how things are being addressed on the project.
And then the only other thing I could echo from my sister's statement is just the chemicals in the ground. I mean, as an adult, I'm during, dealing with neurological problems, I think, from living in that area. And obviously, the factory running is different than, than not running, but still, there's, there's a, the ground's not great. And I would love to see these ecological, the ecological or the soil contamination reports, if that's possible for us to, to see as well.
Well, what does, the Board of Health is very good in town. And like I said, they've, they've already done testing on the soils, okay? And that's through the Board of Health. They'll maintain that. So they have to give reports periodically on what they're doing. So I think, Bill, is there any, as far as that slope, will there be anything riprap or something to, to break that?
We've got it loamed and seeded, so it's not at the point where it would be.
With a four-foot drop, would that be sufficient?
The four-foot drop is a vertical, is a vertical wall.
Okay.
Okay.
So you said the wall doesn't continue?
Right. Because there's enough, there's enough distance.
And he's over there. I'm talking about that area.
Right. I understand. So this is where the wall is, which is, we, we need that wall there to basically, to create that parking lot area.
Right.
Over here, we have much more space to work with the grading, so we can just grade everything off and direct the surface flow where we have it.
But I'm saying, you got a four-foot drop there, right?
Right. From, well, from here, from here to here.
Yeah.
Is four feet. It's not, it's not a four-foot vertical drop. It probably drops a couple of feet here, then, then a foot from here to here.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're not going to see bankings wash away and go down?
In this area, there won't be bankings. As we start moving towards the east, we'll get more into a banking, into a wall and then into a banking over here.
I can see the gray there, yeah.
Correct. But right now, there's a vertical wall there from the building. That's where the building is right now.
Yeah, the building, I've been there. I know what the building looks like, so.
Yeah. And a lot of stuff growing between the building and the property line is a lot of brush with some trees in, growing up in between it. And if those, the concern I have is if we rip the building down, which we're going to do, that the viability of saving those trees in that area is questionable because of the fact that their roosters will be susceptible.
Yeah, right.
Right. That's why we're proposing to plant new trees along the property line in this area.
Okay.
Okay. And we can move those closer to the property line if that, if that's what the board chooses. We can do that as well. Right now, we haven't set.
Could you work with the, the abutters on the, the trees and what, location?
Nope. This is first, we, we really, quite frankly, we really didn't think that the trees that were out there were really something that was desired.
Okay.
I'm thinking that the trees that they're talking about may in fact be on their own property.
Oh, okay.
The larger trees.
The larger trees, yeah.
So I think that's the concern.
No, you won't touch, right.
Brush in the middle.
Right.
I think it's the larger trees.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else which to speak?
Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street. I just want to say, I, I think this is a smart use of city land to convert industrial unused spaces into housing that we desperately need. If the board has the authority, maybe any kind of contingencies or mitigations that might help, you know, their worries. If something were to happen, they get flooded, they get toxic waste, it would be on the applicant, if that's in your purview. But I, I think this is a good use of our land.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Do you have any questions from the board? Okay. I think a motion is in order.
A motion to close the site plan for that first?
I have a motion made and seconded to close the open public meeting for a site plan application for 29 June Street. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
I have a motion made and seconded to close a special permit.
Do I have any further discussion? Here are none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
6:30. Open public hearing for a special permit application, Water Supply Protection District for Eddie Peterson Street, map 548, parcel 18, House and Watership Protection. Evening. Oh, you're back.
It's been a long time. For the record, Bill Hannigan with Hannigan Engineering. With me is also Dominic Elaine, the product engineer, along with the applicant, Tom Elaine of Two Boys Realty Trust. This project is for the construction of a single-family home within the Water Supply Protection District. What we're, what we're showing you on the screen is the, the proposed conditions. What I'd like to highlight, though, is that right now, there's an existing cart path which comes up this way right through here, which goes up the top of the hill, which has been in existence for a long time, probably longer than, than Tom and I have been alive. And that's, that's where we're putting the driveway. So the intent is to, is we, we have a septic system, which we've done soil testing for. We have approvals for the septic system.
Does this go up to the top of the hill, that trail?
Well, everything goes to the top of the hill, but I'm not sure which part, because this, so this doesn't go to the towers, but it goes near the towers.
Where are the towers? They're over here.
Towers are down here.
Over there, okay.
Way out.
Yeah, but they're, they're significant distances away. So, so right now, there's an existing driveway that comes up and, and this is where Mr. Elaine lives right now. He's looking at building this, on this abutting lot, which, these lots were created by his family many years ago. We did check on the, on the driveway configuration relative to the, the ordinance with respect to common driveways. And this was in existence prior to the common driveways being prohibited. I just want to bring that to your attention. There is actually an easement and a deed and a common driveway agreement between the three, the three lots that are out there right now. We ran this by the building department, who I believe pushed it up to Copeland Page and that it came back, it was pre-existing. So just because I know that that's out there, I wanted to bring it up.
Right.
What we're proposing to do is utilize essentially the existing cart path that goes to the woods. It, it travels right about through here. Because of the septic system and the grading required for that, we've had to bow, bow it out a little bit in this area here to go around that. So we're trying to minimize the amount of, of clearing that we're doing on the property. We would clear around the house and for the septic system. The driveway is proposed to be paved for its full length. However, we're going to break that up into phases, which is part of the new, the new plan has a note right up in here that talks about the phasing of the driveway, mainly to keep the costs of the initial construction down for the house, et cetera. So this is an existing paved driveway now. We're going to pave an apron coming off of that for a short distance. Then we're going to basically make a gravel drive along this route to get up to approximately right in here. And then from there, this portion in front of the, in front of the house will be paved as well. There's a, would be a drilled well for public water. As I said, septic system for sewage disposal. The drainage that we're proposing to mitigate the increase in impervious area and runoff, basically what we're going to do is build a, a shoulder drain along the driveway the entire length to allow the water to go from the driveway and be pitched into that, that drain system to allow the, the water not only to be mitigated relative to peak rates, but to also provide recharge, which is one of the paramount requirements of, of the regulations. We are requesting and proposing that this section be done in the second phase, which could be three, five years down the road for the driveway. This, at that point in time, that's when that, that driveway side drain would be installed at the same time it was paved. So we would pave a little bit at the beginning, a little bit towards the house, utilize a, a driveway, gravel driveway for now. And then from there, when it is paved, we would then add in the, the drain system to pick up the runoff from the impervious area and get that back into the ground.
How long is the driveway though?
It's a question that, I didn't, I didn't measure it. It's like three or 400 feet?
Yeah, it's a good 400 feet.
400 feet, yes.
What's your total lot size?
5.6 acres.
Five acres, okay.
How far away is the actual visible? I know it's water protection. How far away from the water are you?
We're in the edge.
Peterson Street.
We're very on the edge.
Yeah, that's quite a, that's.
So this is, this is the water.
The other way up.
Yeah.
Peterson is almost up, it's across from the golf course.
Right.
I know exactly where it is.
Okay.
So we're in the very edge of the, of the watershed. But we're in the, we're in the district, so therefore we are required to perform. Yes, so the property's 5.6 acres. This one is just special permit, so I'm already open, right? So we can talk about that? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. So in the letter that we did with submittal, there are two parts. One is a special permit review for the Water Supply Protection District and one, the other part is a special permit review for the general special permit requirements outlined within the ordinance. So underwater supply protection district provisions made to prevent contamination of groundwater by petroleum products.
Bill, let me open up that part.
I thought you already did.
We did.
I did.
There's only.
There's no site sign here.
Okay.
Yes. All right. You ready?
Go ahead.
All right. So provisions to prevent contamination of groundwater by petroleum products, hazardous materials or waste. The product consists of a construction of a single-family dwelling. The amount of petroleum products, hazardous materials, waste in the property anticipated to be limited, those associated with a single-family house, basically normal household use is what we're looking at relative to those. The, the driveway runoff, once again, will be picked up and discharged into the ground. Drainage recharge features and provisions to prevent loss of recharge. Once again, we have the, the side drain for along the driveways. Provision of, prevention of soil compaction, method of soil compaction will be used. Basically, what that is intended for, we believe, is that in the areas where you don't need full compaction, you don't, you don't go to, you know, you don't go to roadway, roadway compaction levels.
And what will you be using for the, will that be stone, crushed stone or the driveway?
Typically, what, what we do is a graded base for the first, the first.
Graded base?
Yeah. So it's a, it's a, it's stone with some filler, if you will.
Right.
So to, to a packed well and it's easy to plow and it's easier to maintain. Okay? And I think that's what you had at the beginning on your first house anyways, yeah. Provision to prevent seepage from sewer pipes. The septic system design is all the piping is tight joint pipe, so that, that shouldn't be an issue. And the complete list of chemicals, once again, this is a, no chemicals other than potential, or other potentially hazardous materials other than those associated with normal household use or anticipated. So it's just, it's a, it's a single-family house, not a, not something more than that. Relative to this, someone had a question? Relative to this special permit, items one through four, six, eight, nine, and 10, those items are basically addressed by the proposed use for a single-family dwelling. The permitted right, is permitted by right with an underlying residential use. So therefore, we're, it's acceptable in the underlying use, it's in the neighborhood. It's suitably located with the neighborhood which is proposed. It's compatible with existing other uses in the area, being residential. It's not anticipated to have, constitute a nuisance due to air, water pollution, flood noise, dust, vibration, lights are visually, visually offensive structures. It would not be a hazard to abutters or vehicles as it's a residential use. One of the items is the proper operation of the proposed use. So that would include the septic system and the well for its use, as well as, you know, snowplowing would be done by the applicant for, for that purpose. Propose or reasonably protects the adjoining premises against possible detrimental use in the site. There's, there's, there's really nothing, so there's, the applicant's house is right here. This is anticipated to be his son's house. On this lot, the house is further down in this area here, so there's no real effect on that side. And these are all other residential houses that are on large tracts of land, most of them owned by the Schofield family or, or their relatives.
Okay.
Yeah. The proposal ensures that it is conformant with the sign regulation. We're not proposing any signs.
No.
Vehicular traffic, once again, associated for a single-family dwelling. Adequate space for off-street parking and loading. Once again, we have, we have here in front as well as the garage. The proposed about adequate mess of sewer's disposal, refuse for other wastes, so we would have municipal trash pickup. And, and it's, it's septic and well, take care of those items. It's not located within the flood plain and the proposed work ensures protection of water quality, both public and private supplies. That's really where this permit that we're requesting comes into play. Under the first review for the, for the Watership Protection items that we're doing the recharge, we're preventing contamination and we're not, it's not being utilized as a site that would have significant amount of contaminations or contaminated products on the site above and beyond our normal household use. Once again, we also did receive comments from the various boards. The assessor said, no issue. If frontage and setbacks are in line with the building codes. Board of Health said both septic and, septic and well require permits. Inspections by the Board of Health, we acknowledge that. And that has been in, that has, the septic system has been, has been approved. The well permits will be applied for, and the well will be drilled and tested prior to the issuance of the building permit, which is normal building code requirement. Conservation does not appear in any jurisdictional areas relevant to the site. Stormwater management permit will be needed for DPW, so that permit is something that we get prior to construction, so that would be something that we, once we have these approvals and we get beyond their associated period, we would apply to DPW for that. And once again, that's from the Stormwater Authority. Fire Department, Police Department, and Wire Inspector had no comments. And on this letter that we submitted on the 10th, it's noted, that's where we note the proposed phasing of the driveway, and it's really just to be clear of what the intent of the applicant is. He wants to try to get up there and get the construction going in the house. Son wants to move into the house, get in the house, get settled, and a few years down the road, then they'll pave the driveway. It's more about the cost of the driveway is significant, or is, you know, relative to the paving of it. So with that, if there are any questions, be happy to request them.
Bill, does he have to, I mean, is he required to pave it after, you know, it's completed, let's say in phase two, is three years from now? Is he required as part of the approval to?
There's no requirement to pave it, but the requirement is more tied to the drainage on the side of it, that if he does pave it, he has to install that drainage.
Okay. So that would be a condition?
Correct.
Of the acceptance.
Yeah, we want to have the paving allowed by the permit?
Right.
With the inclusion of the drainage system that is going to run alongside.
Yeah.
He may not do it for 10 years, but at least it's part of the permit, correct?
So the thing would be?
But he's not required.
Will accept it. No, he's not required to pave it, no. But if he does pave it, he has to meet all the requirements, and it'll have to be approved.
That'll also be within the stormwater management permit too, so there'll be two permits out there relative to that drainage.
Right. So your stormwater management will still be into play?
Yeah.
And then the, I guess, be the building inspector, or the building department?
Under this permit, correct, yes.
Right. Okay. Do I have anything else, Bill?
Nope.
Okay, anybody have any comments on this project? I'll ask a second time. Anybody have any questions? How about the board? Okay, good. I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any further discussion? I hear none. Call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pouse say no, motion carries.
I think I'm done tonight.
Six forty-five. Open public meeting for site plan application for 29 New Lancaster Road, map 447, parcel 2E, professional office building.
Well, that's a lot.
They kill the trees every time you do that. I never can keep things straight. That's the big drawing. It's too big. We got no room back here.
Who's winning?
Yeah, I think the plan is winning. Okay. Are we all set? I opened it.
You got it?
Fire away.
Thank you.
There you go.
Paul Sam? Good evening, my name is Anthony Cleese with Haley Ward.
Anthony, again, the same thing, gotta speak right into these mics.
My name is Anthony Cleese with Haley Ward, land surveyors and civil engineers for the project. Here for AP Services is Mike Leany. So we're here tonight for site plan for 9,000 square foot professional office. It's located at the corner of New Lancaster Road and Tucker Drive. We're proposing to have, although we have frontage on both roads, we're proposing to have the access to the property off of Tucker Drive, the less traveled road, reducing curb cut onto New Lancaster Road. If you're familiar with the area, you probably notice it's been a vacant, maybe sand pit for quite a long time. A lot of the growth has been removed for years as sand had been taken off that lot. There are power lines that come across the west side of the lot, top of the page on the plan that you see there. So for proposing that professional office of about 40 parking spaces, more than what we need, we're just going to fill out the parking area and have plenty. For utilities, we're proposing to tie into the existing infrastructure in Tucker Drive, again, trying to stay out of any work into New Lancaster Road. There is water and sewer available, and so we're planning on connecting into those utilities. For stormwater, we're proposing to have typical catch basin to manhole collection system, rooting the stormwater to a stormwater infiltration basin, which is located on the north side or the Tucker Drive side of the property. Based on the review from the DPW on the stormwater, we added an additional recharge, underground recharge system on the left-hand side of the building, the south end, to capture some of the roof runoff to provide further infiltration and reduction of rates of runoff for that as well. Proposing some landscaping in and around the development to provide some shade for the parking lot, landscaping along the buildings, some plantings and whatnot there. Be sidewalks all around the building for access from the parking lot. Screen dumpster area located on the left side of the plan there, again, screened with a six-foot-high fence. And that transformer possibly pending national grid review on the right-hand side of the building. Could be possible, we don't need a pad-mounted transformer, maybe just a pole-mounted, but we're going to be going through national grid to vet that out. It's a brief overview of the project for you.
Is it to be snow?
Yep, so snow storage. So basically, we have this whole west side of the parking area available to have snow storage all around the park, and there's really nothing that's going to obstruct that. So we have, yeah, so snow storage, 4,700 square feet of snow storage, and we only needed 740. There was a typo there, added an extra zero by accident, which Elizabeth called in the review. Thank you for that.
That's leaving, right? I can't see.
You did it up here.
Would you like me to zoom into an area right there?
No, I just had it planned.
Yeah, okay.
It's a lot of snow.
So there's plenty of room for snow storage. We're not?
Because that's a steep slope up behind, isn't it?
Yeah, it'll be, it's like a four-to-one, five-to-one slope.
But you treat all the trees, you got like 10 of them across the back? Push snow around the tree?
Yep, so again, you'll just be careful and put that in around there, yeah. So I mean, we were trying to satisfy the city zoning for the trees, which is typical around the parking lot. Plenty of room at the end, like I said, we needed 740 square feet, we have 4,700 available, so it's, even on this front right-hand side, you could pile snow up, you know, there as well. So plenty of space.
The drainage here, is that a riprap coming off of your?
Yep, that's an emergency overflow spillway, so, you know, for storms, for some reason, there was a, the outlet structure had failed. It's just a means to provide safe flow of the water out of that basin, but it's not intended to have any flow come out of it in anything less than a hundred-year storm, or if there was some reason of a failure of the system. So it's just, it's a typical component to those stormwater basins, so you have controlled flow in case of a failure. And that would go to, that goes to the swale that exists along New Lancaster Road, and is an existing catch basin there. So there's a swale between our property and the road, so then that water would not get to the road, it would go to the swale and into the catch basin, what it does now. But again, the intent is that water would never come out of that.
So this is a swale here?
Does it exist, so it's?
An S334.
Right here, down in here, off the green.
Oh, in here?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, right in the right of way. So between the edge of the curb and the property line, there's a gentle swale in there, because New Lancaster Road, the drainage is, there's no curbing there, so the water just comes off the road into that swale.
Okay.
Did you go through the department head comments?
Yep.
You did that, or?
Well, I mean, I didn't go through them, I've gone through them, but I wanted to leave that up to the board or planning staff and do that however you'd like. My understanding is any comments that were mentioned have, plans have been updated or revised comments to say everyone's all set. The only ones that I thought, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Elizabeth, is comments from the planning staff.
Where does the power line go? Doesn't it go right through here?
Yep, so up in the top here.
That's right behind it. No, it's the one, it's up along the tops.
Up along the top is?
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
There's two or three pole lines that run across, across this Tucker, up in here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I didn't, just didn't, I didn't see it up there.
So the DPW was still looking for?
So they're all set.
They were all set with post-predevelopment, post-development runoffs?
Yep, so that was the, that was a reason for the additional stormwater recharge chambers on the end of the building is to, we had a very slight increase in the hundred-year storm peak rate. Tough thing with sites like this is it's all sand, so very little runoff leaves the site now, so the criteria to meet after development is a little more difficult sometimes, so we had a small little increase in the hundred-year storm, and so we added those chambers to?
Added the chambers.
Yep, to reduce that, yeah. And I believe they followed up with an email acknowledging that they were all set.
Right.
And the police department, same thing, they had some comments, police department was all set, everyone else?
Tucker Drive, so.
Yep, everyone else was okay.
Right.
Yep. So there were some comments, I believe, from Elizabeth's review that I believe warranted some discussion acknowledgement from the board.
Okay.
Don't know if I can go through the ones I thought, or if Elizabeth wants, however you want to.
You're on a roll.
Okay.
Yeah, you're on a roll.
So some of the ones that highlight, and please jump in if I missed them. One that has typically come up for site plans before the board is a section of the regulations that discuss having a landscaping plan prepared by a licensed landscape architect. We did not do that, although the zoning does give the planning board the ability to accept the plans that have been submitted as long as they meet the intent and to the satisfaction of the board.
Right.
So we would ask that the board accept.
That's a waiver.
Accept. It's technically, I don't think it's technically a waiver, because you, in the way the zoning reads, it gives you the ability to accept the plan without, it's, the way it's written in the?
We typically do a waiver on that.
We usually do a waiver on that.
That's fine, so whatever.
Either way, it's just clean up.
Absolutely. So that was, that's one item, to please accept what has been submitted for that. There was a comment about lighting, I think it was more just to reiterate the lighting requirements, the one-foot candles in the driveway parking area and things like that. We put a note right on the plans, which becomes a standard for us to make sure that that is always on there for whoever ends up looking at the plans, electrician, lighting specialist, we put that right from the zoning verbatim. We put those notes right on the plan, which is on sheet P 1.00, and I've zoomed in there on the TV for you. So we've put that right on the plan, so it's not lost in a condition or anything like that, we want to make sure that's obvious, so I think we've addressed that. Though a comment about easements, please verify locations and purposes of all easements. I believe we've done that, everything that we're aware of, which is essentially the mass electric easement that runs along the back, and there's also some easements that exist along the frontage of New Lancaster Road. There is a sewer and water easement that goes across the front, which services the, it's a one-on-one fitness building that's to the left of this building. Because there is no water and sewer that was easily available at the time for that building, it actually runs across the frontage of this one to get to Tucker Drive. But we're staying outside the easement, we're not impacting any of those utilities. Property boundaries provide location of all the properties in that, and I believe the zoning says that you can use the assessor's map for that. I had submitted a GIS printout 11 by 17, so it's up to the board's discretion that that's acceptable, so we would ask that that would be acceptable to the board to satisfy that comment. There was a question on signs, if there's any signs being proposed, any site signs, and so nothing is proposed at this time for a site sign. Any signage would be on the building for that, so nothing, nothing external around the street.
No light standards?
Yep, no, like pylon sign or a standard sign up near the driveway, it's just going to be on the building. Landscaping, we touched upon that, and then there was a comment about sidewalks for pedestrian and bicycle access to adjacent properties and between individual businesses within the development, so there are no sidewalks on Tucker Drive or New Lancaster Road, so we provided sidewalks fully encompassing all of the usable areas of our building, so we have access to all of the doors for all of the clients and employees, so we feel as though we've met that. Those are all the ones I thought were worth noting, unless I missed anything.
No. And is the police department satisfied now?
Yes, so we should, so I believe the follow-up email was submitted Friday.
You're doing good, Tom. You can do better than I did.
Okay. Okay, they approve it. And then the last comment, and I'm sorry, Anthony, you touched upon it, was from the DPW.
Yep, so they had a comment that was about the peak rate of runoff in the hundred-year storm, so that was why we ended up adding the extra recharge area on the left sand side of the building to accommodate that, and we updated our drainage calculations and submitted that to them, and they came back with an email that said they were satisfied.
They were just satisfied, yeah. Good. Okay. Do you have any other comments?
No.
Yeah, we're all set. I'll open it up to the audience. Do I have anyone out there that has any comments on this particular project? I'll ask a second time. Do I have anyone out here do any comments on this project? Okay, with that, I'll move to the board. Do we have any additional questions or comments?
I'll move to closing now.
Have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing? Any further discussion? Hear none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pouse say no, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time.
Six fifty, continue an open public meeting for preliminary subdivision application, Orchard Hill Park Drive, extension, proposed road extension. Map 369, block 1, lots 2, 3, and 4. Map 386, block 4, lots 1C3 and 5. Map 463, lot 11.
Can you open the next one, too?
There's some different parties involved. There's a different engineer for the next one.
All set for us?
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, as long as you speak right into the mic, you have fun.
Thank you. For the record, Chris Rainier on behalf of Greg Liscotti and Liscotti Development Corporation, the applicant for this preliminary subdivision plan. I have with me Matt Van Bowler, the civil engineer of record for the preliminary plan. Just as a reminder, we presented this plan at the last planning board meeting. This is a waiver-free subdivision plan for a proposed 440 linear foot roadway. The board continued this meeting until this evening to consider the general impact statement that was submitted together with our preliminary subdivision application as required under section 12 of the board's subdivision regulations. Just as a reminder, upon review of the GIS, the general impact statement, the board may require a development impact statement to be submitted with the definitive subdivision plan. be submitted with the definitive subdivision plan. So the, this meeting was continued for this evening for the board to consider whether a development impact statement would be required at the definitive subdivision plan stage. If you can answer any questions, but I think that was sort of a limited presentation that we had tonight focused on that, that open issue from last hearing.
Okay. Thank you. We have a couple of letters.
I'll read them. I just wanted to see the plan again. But in the meantime, before I, I'll read Mr. Liscotti's first, because I know he's not present.
Correct.
This is dated Thursday, November 6th, from Greg Liscotti to the planning department. On behalf of Liscotti Development, on, on behalf of Liscotti Development, the applicant for the preliminary subdivision plans for subdivisions off of Orchard Hill Park Drive Extension and Pioneer Drive, I write to consent to an extension of time until tonight's meeting, which he was asking, which he had to do in writing. As discussed at the board meeting, board's meeting on November 3rd, the sole topic at this continued subdivision meeting will be the board's consideration of the general statements provided with each preliminary subdivision plan as required by Section 12 of the subdivision regulations and set forth in that section, whether the board will require a development impact statement be submitted within, with the definitive subdivision plan for each proposed subdivision. As discussed with the board, a development impact statement is not required at the preliminary subdivision plan stage. The applicant is required to submit a general impact statement with the preliminary plan, and then the board decides if a development impact statement is required, and if so, the level of detail. A development impact statement is not automatically required. As the board considers the general impact statements for the preliminary plans, I note that I cannot recall another instance where the planning board has required a development impact statement for a subdivision. Further, there is no project proposed for either subdivision plan, so there is nothing to study in a development impact statement. If the board wants a development impact statement, it would be appropriate to acquire such study if and when a new future project is proposed on one of the subdivision lots as a condition of such new future project filing a site plan application. Thank you, Greg Liscotti of Liscotti Development.
Thank you.
Before I read the second one, is Chelsea, is Chelsea Madison here tonight? Okay, then I'll read her. Hers is dated November 6th to the planning department. Dear members of the Leominster Planning Board, my name is Chelsea Madison. I respectfully request that the definitive stage submission include a thorough development impact analysis evaluating the maximum potential build-out scenario for this site. This will help ensure that the board and the city departments understand the potential full impacts on traffic, pedestrian safety, and public infrastructure. Even if the applicant has not yet finalized its plans, such an analysis would provide an essential comparison point for evaluating road capacity, emergency access, and the need for pedestrian infrastructure, including sidewalks along Harvard Street. I also ask that the impact studies specifically include a comparison of conditions with and without sidewalks along the residential portion of Harvard Street, as this data will be critical in assessing pedestrian circulation and safety outcomes. I understand that the applicant has offered $150,000 to the city as part of this project. However, since the purpose and application of that contribution has not yet been defined, it is important that the board require an impact analysis to determine whether the proposed contribution adequately mitigates the project's pedestrian and public safety impacts. Including these analysis would ensure that the definitive stage review is based on clear measurable data rather than assumptions. Requesting these studies at this stage would not predetermine any approval. It would simply ensure that the board's later findings are supported by comprehensive evidence consistent with Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81U. Thank you for your consideration and for your continued attention to public safety and long-term planning in our community. Sincerely, Chelsea Madison, 65 Harvard Street. John, can I make one second?
Sure.
Just, we, when, after the presentation, and the board may have some comments, when we open up to the audience, we're fully aware that everyone is seeking a development impact statement. So on behalf of the planning board, I'm requesting that if you come up to the podium, it be about something other than requesting a development impact statement.
Thank you, Carol.
But I'd like to see the plans again. I know you'd be having some trouble.
If you have a quick one, too, if that's helpful.
That's not to say you may not have input, what should be on it, but I don't, after the board speaks, but we're well aware that the issue tonight is whether there should be a development impact statement, along with other matters.
Is there a remote right there? Do you?
Oh, where's Rob? Rob, Rob knows how to do it.
Oh, pardon.
Yeah.
I do have a.
Here comes Rob. He's got the remote.
You're not kidding there? Something just came up.
Rob's, Rob's gonna save us again.
Just so everyone doesn't have to watch me struggle with the technology. I do have a plan here, just as a quick overview. I think folks familiar, this is the Orchard Hill Park Drive extension, recently constructed Orchard Hill Park Road. Pioneer Drive, 440 linear foot road here, kind of behind this industrial development off Pioneer Drive, fully compliant with the subdivision regulations as far as slope, width, sidewalks, curbing, street trees, lighting, and all the lots are completely compliant with zoning. Seven proposed lots. And this is the area highlighted in right here is the proposed roadway.
I just needed to refresh my memory. If you wanted to keep it propped up and turned around for the.
Yeah, sure, I'll put on needles.
You want to open the second one, too?
No, because they're two separate ones.
Four lots total.
How many lots?
Was it four?
Seven total lots.
Seven total, okay. And there were no waivers requested. We know that, right?
Correct.
It was just straight, everything conformant.
Just a preliminary plan.
Just a preliminary plan, that's correct. Face it comes to the audience again.
You can have it face, face the audience.
Okay, are you all set?
But I'm just thinking if Sal has a plan, then they don't have to, whatever he's, they don't have to repeat anything that he suggests.
All right, you know, I made the initial motion on this, and I do think it needs a development impact statement. I've been going through a lot of stuff the last week and a half, two weeks since this, since we first initiated this, and the time would be at the definitive stage. I do feel strongly about that because it gives you, gives us actual uses. And that would tie in well to what a lot of the, a lot of the neighbors were concerned with, you know, especially on the residential side, if there was going to be a residential build-out. But we know under each definitive plan that is submitted to us. So I would still request that we do a development impact statement according to subdivision regs, which is pretty straightforward. And I would go to Appendix A in the book and pay significant attention to, you have Section 8, which is a man-made environment, and those details, and includes land use, density, zoning, architecture. And I also want to make sure that there's special attention paid to Section 10 about schools, you know, discussing the numbers or effects of so many kids in the school system, the locations, total population for the subdivision, pace, you know, that whole subsection, 10, A, B, C, and also the human considerations here. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that go into this if the use isn't industrial or the use isn't commercial. If it becomes residential, we'll have a way to understand the impact before we move forward with anything. So that's, that's where I would focus my energy on it, and I do believe the time to do that is on a definitive, and we can go from there.
Okay, I wanted to maybe open it up to the audience, Shelby, for the board members.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Okay, that's good. Are you all set? I'll open it up to the audience.
Hi, Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street. Through the chair, Mr. Solicitor, you're, you're allowed to require an impact statement for both the preliminary and definitive stage, correct? One being a more broad view, and then the other one being a more focused specialized study?
It allows us to do things, okay, but I have to have something, some indication of what we have. My problem is, and I think the board, the primary problem is, we don't know. It could be commercial, it could be industrial, it could be, I hate to say it, a big box store coming before it.
Yeah, it could be.
Or it could be, you know.
This is not a discussion.
I don't think that's your question.
But, but, so that's why we really struggle with, okay, saying, I gotta do, do a definitive impact statement. Let me finish. If we come in and we say, do that now, and you've used the numbers, which are wrong, that a thousand houses, well, it's not a thousand, because you know, there's, there's wetlands, and there's roads, and, and there's everything else that comes into play, but some number. We don't know what that number is until, but is it housing? The number is different for housing, the number is different for industrial, okay? And, and we also have an additional problem that I have in front of me that's existing today. We have a proposed ordinance change with the city council that affects this whole area. So I, and I have no clue, and I don't want to make any comment on that, except that it exists out there. So making any, any statements around that really gives us, oh no, you know, whistling in the wind, as you might say. And so that's, I'm having some issues.
I understand that completely. From my understanding, which is not factual, which is why I would bring it to the board, you're allowed to require an impact statement at both the preliminary and the definitive stage. Your preliminary impact statement would probably be something general, stormwater, you know, what the roads effects are, very generalized impacts. Obviously, your definitive impact statement that you could require would then be more in-depth, once you know what the project is.
I'm gonna ask you, I'm gonna ask you a question. What do you want me to use for figures? What do you want me to use for build-out?
Well, I think she's simply asking if we can, she's simply asking if we can require the applicant.
To do it now, in preliminary.
To do a, to do it, to conduct a definitive impact state, a.
To do both.
Impact statement during the preliminary.
Yeah, can you do it at both stages?
Do we want to defer to legal?
So, I mean, I looked at the appendix after the last meeting. It does say in accordance with Section 7. Section 7 is the preliminary subdivision section. So that would imply to me that you can request it at this stage. The question is, what would that look like? And what would be the effect if they just said, we're not going to do it?
So your request is that, you're asking for, you're requesting that we do that?
If you can do it at both stages, get a general sense. Then at the definitive stage, get a specialized, in-depth, really deep dive into it. But if we can do it at both stages, if you have that authority, why not do it?
All right, so, okay, so that's your request, and we'll consider it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Do you, okay, we'll have you, you might as well respond after I've been on this.
Okay.
Hi, Liz Macarillo, 75 Harvard Street. I wanted to piggyback on that, because I'd actually love if you could bring up your grading plan associated with the site.
You can speak in the mic, please?
Can we pull up the grading plan associated with the site, please?
If we can get the.
I can pull it up.
It's right there.
However we can look at it, I think it's important, and it's directly relevant to what Ms. Brady was just saying about being able to provide some measure of a development impact statement based on what we know today about what they're applying for. This drawing, you really need to look at it closely to see what I'd like to point out, because it looks like there's a whole bunch of trees there, but of course, they're going to take most of those trees out, and they're going to regrade. And what they're doing is creating a bowl. Here. I can't point and reach the microphone. Thank you. Okay.
Oh, we can't get it up on the screen?
I would love for this to be on the screen, because.
Where's Rob?
It's impactful. I can get it on my phone, so I feel like there's a way to do this, that you can just go to. A file, a website.
We can use our imagination, so.
Well.
Well, we've all seen the drawing. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, but my point is that we should have it in front of us as we discuss it, because I think that's relevant. They're proposing substantial regrading all around this area. They're proposing stormwater management systems, retainage basins, invert elevations, a lot of things that are very technical associated with this roadway. And if we don't study this and its impact now, then you're approving this and saying it is okay. And when you come back at definitive, they will tell you, well, you already approved this.
No, 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 Ms., when they get to definitive, that is, all the requirements have to be met, okay?
Okay.
The preliminary, all, all the preliminary does is give you some options, and the planning board's an indication of what might happen, okay? We had a plan, I'll just, I'll go back in history a little bit. We had a definitive, preliminary plan that came in for 42 houses up on Pier Street once. It, it ended up at 12, and that never, it never happened, because.
I understand that.
So it doesn't, it doesn't play.
Okay. They're putting this forth as their proposal now. So this is something we could study now. We could look at the impact to the abutters. We could look at whether the stormwater is adequately designed. We could have that stormwater peer reviewed to make sure what they're saying works actually functions as designed, and that the information they're plugging into their models is accurate for the site. We could require a soil analysis and see where the water table is, and make sure that the regrading and the drainage is acceptable and adequate for this site. And we can do that based on what they are presenting to you now. So there is a very real reason to pursue a development impact statement at the preliminary stage based solely on what they are presenting to you today. You do not have to conjecture anything. You can look at what they've submitted, and you can study it closely to make sure that it is providing for something reasonable for the city instead of a problem down the road. And of course, as a piggyback, I support the development impact statement at the definitive stage as well, but it should be in addition to this, so that we are understanding what they are proposing at this time. That road is not insignificant, and we should be really looking closely at it and not just waving it through as if it gets its own pass. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think you nailed it. A preliminary plan is just that, it's preliminary. It's meant to generally show what a subdivision would look like to the board and get your feedback on it, so that we can then prepare a definitive plan. As you also noted, there is, and as was mentioned at the last meeting of the board, there is no project proposed on these lots. So to come up with a definite, a development impact statement, one of the first things it does is it talks about the metrics of the proposed project, which we do not have. So we do not have a preliminary, or I'm sorry, a development impact statement to advance with a preliminary plan. We are properly in front of the board with the preliminary plan to solicit your feedback, that we will then. that we will then use to develop the definitive subdivision plan. We did submit the general impact statement, which does provide a, a general overview of the impacts of the roadway that was in, in the preliminary application. And from there, if, if the board would like to request a development impact statement with the definitive subdivision plan, it can. I think the, the regulations are clear that the board may require that. We still run into the same situation of there not, not being a project to study as part of the definitive subdivision plan, but we could certainly provide more detail on the roadway as part of that process. So it's, it's helpful to understand where we are in the process with the preliminary. Under your regulations and under the subdivision control law, it's supposed to be a very preliminary process at this time. And then the board will either approve the preliminary plan that allows us to go on and prepare the definitive subdivision plan. You could approve with modifications or conditions, such as if you wanted the applicant to prepare a development impact statement with the definitive, you would approve with that modification. Or you can deny the plan tonight. And the denial still allows us to go ahead and, and provide, prepare the definitive impact, I'm sorry, the definitive subdivision plan and submit it following the denial. I suggest if the board denies, it could give some indication of why it's denying, so we could, you know, carefully craft our definitive subdivision plan. But that's, that's where we are at this very preliminary stage, having submitted the general impact statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any other comments?
Hi, good evening. Sushal Afuzzafer, City Councilor here in Leominster. The project before you tonight in this preliminary subdivision plan is the road. That's a project. That construction, the construction of a road in that area will impact that area. What are the impacts that that construction would have? It's a road. It will have an impact on that area. What will the stormwater, what, what, you know, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, so I can't speak specifically, you know, to those considerations. However, the project is the road. It isn't, there's no project there. The project is the road. That's what they've submitted. That's the preliminary subdivision that you have before you tonight and need to evaluate and determine whether or not it's, it deserves, whether or not the people who have been here for numerous meetings, you know, are entitled to some answers to some of the questions that they've raised. So, development impact statement, it can be done on a preliminary subdivision. The plan you have before you, the project is the road. And I would encourage you to think about that and to require a development impact statement on what you have right now before you. Thank you.
Basically, a preliminary impact statement is on paper only. It is not approval of a road. They would still have to come in for the definitive for a road for all calculations. It could move. It gives us in a general area, but this, they cannot start doing work. They still have to come in at the definitive for the road with all the calculations and all the drainage.
And all the peer review.
And the peer review.
And department head review.
That's, this is strictly on the paper.
Right.
Dave Rollins, 49 Braeburn Circle. So I, I think there's no question that the, that the development impact statement can be done on both stages. I think that's both in section seven and section 12 to of our regulations. I'm, I'm a little confused when, when we say that no project here. Is, is not the 294 units, isn't that lot part of one of the subdivisions?
No.
Yes, yes.
It is, but that's separate.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just want to make, so people aren't confused, when we talk about there's no, no, no new projects, there's a 294-unit project that is part of one of the subdivisions, the 55-acre subdivision. So we know the ordering of this is out of, is out of order. They probably would have never submitted a subdivision preliminary, the re, application. The only reason for doing it, we know, because it freezes zoning for eight years. And they're, they, after the city, after the petition was put in to reset the zoning back, then the subdivision plan went through. And that's just a protection mechanism, because they protect the zoning for eight years, so it can't be touched. That's why the ordering is out. They probably would have never have done it. So I want to know, how many preliminary subdivision plans have you reviewed that had a 294-unit complex that already passed site plan approval? Probably none. Because normally, a preliminary is a preliminary, but this isn't really a preliminary, because there's already a 294-unit complex that's been approved on this preliminary. So it's a little bit, you know, a little bit, I think, misleading to say, this is preliminary, nothing's open. You could do a impact statement just for the 294-unit alone and say, skip the rest. We don't really care about the rest. We just care about that one. And do a development impact statement for that. Having put that aside, the development impact statement for the definitive is obviously the most important. And a couple things. I, I want to make sure that there's some components that were specified here about some of these impact statements that were more important, maybe the more important we concentrate on. But I think we ought to make sure that we don't skip over some of the other ones that are also important, water, wetland, energy, noise.
That wasn't my intention.
I, I understand, I understand. I just, and I, and I, I know you wanted to emphasize some-
Yep.
But I wanted to reinforce that.
Yep.
The whole thing-
And I'll back you up on the reinforcement.
Yeah, thank you. The other point I wanted to make out on that in statement is on section D of our subdivision regulations. It said, "The planning board requires that a citizen participation component be incorporated into development impact statement, and specifically local, that local residents directly impacted by the proposed action be allowed input into the study." So that's section D.
I also read that, and I was trying to find it, so I could mention that as well, Dave, and I, and that's the important piece in the definitive stage.
I, I agree with you.
Yep.
So 12, that's, that's in section 12, 2D.
Yep.
And I, I think that's important as well. So I, I, I know that, you know, we, we, you know the importance of this, but one thing that's sort of bothersome to me is we keep hearing, but they're not going to build a thousand units up there. They're not going to build a thousand units. This board recommended unanimously to change the zoning. What did that zoning change, what did that mean? Limited to one-third residential. That's what was originally, that was what's original on there. That was removed. That opens up another 42 acres of residential. Eighty-two acres now can be built residential. Who asked for that? We already know from the Housing Committee, the 29th of August, that the developer asked for those changes. We ought to take the developer at his word. He asked for, or suggested that the zoning be changed to make the whole area residential. If you do the math, then the, and he also asked, obviously, for the reduction of buffers, he also asked for the density to be 21.8, all of which he got. If you do the math, we know that 21 times eight comes out to be like 1,700 units. That's not going to happen, because there's wetland and borders. But a thousand is a reality. And the first section that they've already got approval for, the 18 acres, is not at 21.8 units per acre. We know that, because he put a pool in, and a clubhouse in, and other infrastructure. But the remaining 37 acres of this road that comprised the 55-acre subdivision can be built out at the 21.8, because he doesn't have to put a pool in or all that stuff. So it's most likely going to be built out at a much, much higher density, minus wetlands, minus borders. 21.8 times the remaining 37 is 800 units. Let's say it's 600 on top of the 294. That's 900, and that doesn't count the subdivision across the road. So anybody that's downplaying, saying, oh, a thousand's never going to happen, I think you're mistaken, and you shouldn't be, the, the, what the goal should be is to force them to do a, a development impact statement, so they have to put their cards on the table, so we as a neighborhood and a city can prepare for what is currently allowed by right. And it's massive. It's the largest, it'll be the largest apartment complex in the city by far, in the most congested ward by far. Thank you.
Dave, well, can I just respond? I, you know, in the initial section 12 development impact statement, section A, right? You know, you have to submit the statement on the effects of the proposed action has or will have on the immediate neighborhood or land area surrounding neighborhoods, or land areas, community at large, environmental, fiscal, and socioeconomic concerns. And that's a detailed assessment. So that, that, to me, is part of the control we can have on the definitive, because we don't have to approve the definitive. We don't approve the preliminary-
He can still go forward.
That's correct.
I, I agree with all that.
Yep.
I do think, you know, I, I think it sends a statement, I, I personally would like to see the, the, the impact statement just on the 294 units. If you said waive all the other lots, we don't have any idea what they are, but we do know what that one is, that's part of this subdivision. Give me a report of development impact, and that right there will provide you a lot of insight when it comes back later and says, here's phase two, that's 600 units, or here's phase two, that's 300 units. It's not a waste of time. It's real, and it could add value to all of us, because, believe me, 294 is not, is not nothing.
No.
That's real. And so that's why I'd like to see it done now, and then come back later. And if he, and if he says, you know what, I'm not going to do it, and it gets denied, then that's a statement. You know, he can still move forward, he can still go forward, but you're asking him to do it. And you know what? This whole business, last time we had this thing about, well, there was a time limit and all that, you know, for delay, to ask for more time. Come on. They wouldn't even have filed this thing if the count, if the, somebody, the petitioners in this neighborhood didn't put the petition in to change the zoning. They wouldn't even have filed it. There's no time limit that's of importance here. That's just, you know, trying to pressure you, but that's-
Okay, thank you.
Donna Mallett, 58 Sky Lane. I guess I'm trying to find out the downside of the oversight, that your board has a responsibility to the citizens to make smart decisions. When you approved the subdivision plan, or the site plan, without having the peer review of the stormwater, I, I think it sets a really dangerous precedent. I know that it was asked for by two people last time before you approved it, so this is, this is another opportunity to take a look at things, because we did conduct it. I sent to you a 18-page stormwater management review, and it finds that the plans you approved are in direct violation of Leominster's stormwater ordinances. So to not take the opportunity that you have by rights within your purview to study the impact on the neighborhood, it, to me, it's, it's screaming that you don't care. What is the downside to our city to following our own charter and getting the information on a 294-unit part of this subdivision at this phase?
Man, that's, we're not talking about the 294. We're talking about-
It is part of the subdivision, John. It is part of this subdivision, sir. It is absolutely part of what they are filing. If you looked at the plans, you will see that it is in fact part of the subdivision filing. And that's what, that's what Dave has said, that's what we are all saying. It is part of it. And I'm hoping, I'm hoping that we can find some way to let somebody else look at this work and prove that you care. Thank you.
Do I have any other comments?
I wasn't going to.
Uh huh.
Good evening, Phil Brady, 214 Harbin. Based on what Donna just said, I think it's your obligation to protect what we have. This is part of the subdivision, John. This is part of it. You're saying it's not. It's part of it. It's on paper. Please, please, give us that. Ask for an impact statement. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else? Anyone from the board?
I move to close the hearing.
I have a motion made, and second, to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. The second one, continue an open public meeting for preliminary subdivision application, Pioneer Drive, proposed road extension, map 369, block one, lots 1A and 1B, map 386, block four, lot 2F.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record again, Chris Rainier from Goleman Stores, on behalf of the applicant, LaScotti Development Corp. This is a little bit like Groundhog Day, but it's, I think, a little different. As I have with me Anthony from Haleyian Ward, who's the civil engineer of record of this smaller subdivision. We were in front of this board also at the last hearing on this smaller subdivision, reviewed some more limited upland areas of the subdivision, so I don't, I'm not sure it presents the same concerns to folks as the Orchard Hill Drive subdivision does. Just like the matter that you heard before you, we were returning this evening for the board to consider whether, after review of the development, I'm sorry, the general impact statement, whether a development impact statement would be required with the definitive subdivision plan to be filed for this subdivision off of Pioneer Drive. Thank you.
Okay, good, so.
I made this motion as well.
Then Anthony give it.
Sure. There was three lots. Three of, uh- So what we have here is preliminary subdivision plan for 150-foot cul-de-sac off of Pioneer Drive to create three, three lots. This area, it's, it's, we're on the south side of Pioneer Drive, just a little bit beyond. If you're, there's a sewage pumping station, bottom left of the plan as you're looking at it. So if you're coming from Lunenburg, coming up pump station to the left, this is the land on the left of that. So again, short, short cul-de-sac, 150 feet. Intent would be to tie into the existing municipal infrastructure that's there in Pioneer Drive. Water and sewer is available. Also, the intent was to tie into the existing stormwater infrastructure that is there. There's a stormwater basin out in the rear of the property that was installed as, as some previous developments, and there's some drainage, piping that goes out to that, so the intent would be to, to tie into that. Proposing sidewalks both sides of the street, connecting into Pioneer Drive. No waivers were proposed as part of this subdivision. I believe one of the comments, one of the plans we had shown, two crosswalks, one for each side of the proposed extension, really the DPW's comment was they didn't like that, they wanted just one crosswalk, which would be fine, no issues with that. You know, there are wetlands in and around the property, conservation, you know, made sure they pointed that out, we acknowledge that, and at the time comes when you continue on to more definitive plans, you'll absolutely be fine with the Conservation Commission for any work within 100 feet of the wetlands. So it's a brief overview for you.
Mr. Cleaves, the third, the second lot is the, is the large, the large lot-
Yes.
encompasses the-
The stormwater basin ends up on two of the lots, if that's what you're talking about.
Okay.
The thick black line is the proposed lots.
Okay.
So you have, you know, lot one to the left, small portion of the stormwater basin is on that, which, that's where we'd look to expand the stormwater basin as needed. And then you have, lot two is the larger of them, which extends all the way back to the railroad.
Is primarily wetlands?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
And then lot three is the right-hand side, which, you know, they all probably have about the same upland area, probably looking at a total of maybe three acres of, of upland.
You have anything else?
No, it was a brief overview. If you have any other questions on that, happy to elaborate.
Okay, a little one up to the audience.
Hi, Haley Brady, 200 Harvard Street. I will raise a point that it shows the catch basin there, but that, those lots are pretty much all wetlands. You pull it up on GIS, there, there's not much that can be built there at all. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but that roadway doesn't meet industrial sizing, right, correct? Like, the industrial-sized roads have to be a different specs? So that would be commercial or residential?
Yeah, no, they meet the subdivision standards, but...
Yeah, so it's not an industrial road, though, I guess is my question.
Yeah, that's a right-of-way for industrial road.
What's the width of the road?
It's 50, 50 foot right-of-way.
50 foot right-of-way, that's landed.
Okay. The other thing is, we're talking about impact statements left and right. This one, just do a preliminary, because there's very few things that actually could be built there due to the very, very limited scope of land that's available. Where that's proposed is pretty much a drop-off. I don't know if you've ever been to that area, but that side of the street goes right down, which is why it's all wetlands. That would be a very, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but it's either going straight down or they're grading it up. There's very few options. Just maybe do an impact statement, just to see what, at the very least, could be built there, because there's not much.
Do I have anyone else wishes to comment on this one? About the board?
I move to close the hearing.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor say aye. Both say no. Motion carries. Regular meeting, call to order.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chikone.
Here.
Carver Torriello.
Here.
Tom Kergnen.
Here.
Jason Parry.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
John Souza.
Here. Plans submitted. Don't have any.
Minutes.
All business.
Minutes of October 6.
Four minutes, sorry.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion made and seconded to accept a minute from the October 6 meeting. Do you have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Plans submitted, none. All business. Preliminary subdivision application, Orchard Hill Park Drive extension, proposed road extension, map 369, block 1, lots 2, 3, and 4, map 386, block 4, lot 1C, 35, map 463, lot 11. Discussion. Do I have any discussion?
I, you know, just a comment. One of the reasons I'm shying away from, you know, saying, let's do a, do it, an impact study on, on the preliminary, because we've already had, all the information we got off of the apartment complex going in, I mean, they still got to come back with a, with a detailed plan as well. But I don't, I think it would be a redundancy to, you know, do a very generalized impact statement on these. Well, let's just talk about the first one.
Or maybe not a redundancy, but a completely different impact statement when we ask for the definitive.
And the definitive is, is going to be a thing that's going to help us to control what we can control under the law and under the charter and under the subdivision regulations. That's what's going to give us the meat we need to enforce changes. If, if they said no tonight, and we denied the preliminary subdivision, 45 days, bang, it's theirs. Doesn't matter. It just automatically goes through, and they can submit the definitive within seven months of the submission. I think, you know, yeah, I agree with a lot of you that, that there was a, you know, how this came about. And, and it bothered me too. It bothered me to the point where I was real concerned. But there's nothing that, that we could have done to prevent that on the other end. We, we tried to control it. They couldn't, they said no. We asked for more time. They said no. We could have denied it, they would have still submitted a definitive. That's where we have our only option to try to mitigate some of the issues and some of the concerns you have. And believe me, we're all for the neighborhoods and families of this city. To make any other kind of comment that we don't care about the city and we don't care about the people, that's not true. We care a lot about the people. That's why we have you talk all the time, because we want your input. So, that being said, our fire and our strength and our decisions are going to be, it's going to be on the detailed final plan that's submitted to us. And you got to be here for that as well. Right now, you know, there's not a lot of control we have. I wasn't around when they changed the zoning, so I didn't even know about the changes in the zoning. So, and then, you know, these go in before the zoning petition goes in to get the zoning changed. That kind of grandfather is these guys under the old MU2, or the way the MU2 is right now, not the old MU2. So, let's make sure everything is straight on. You know, I see all these things about what a rotten bunch of people we are. We have to follow state law, we have to follow the charter, we have to follow subdivision regulations, and any, you know, we've been sued a lot over, over our time on this board. I've been sued many times. John's been sued many times. Anybody that's been here more than 10 years has been sued many times.
I was sued the first day I was on the board.
And he didn't even come to a meeting yet. And, so there's no collusion here, there's no embed with developers here, there's none of that. And to, to make it sound that way is really kind of irresponsible on some people's part. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Sal.
I'm not making a motion.
Okay, I'll introduce a motion that, that we accept a preliminary subdivision with a stipulation that a development impact statement...
Detailed.
A detailed development impact statement.
According to our regulations...
Well, we do that anyway.
Yes.
Will, will be a part of the complete definitive plan.
Can I add something to that, John?
Sure.
And there should be neighborhood and, you know, involvement. Reach out to the people, have them walk the land with you, have, show them what you're doing.
Sal, 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 not part of the, we'll make that, okay. Yeah, that statement, not motion, I'm sorry.
I'm having, I'm a little confused by the motion.
Motion is to accept the definitive, the preliminary subdivision plan with the, okay, with the caveat that a definitive impact statement will be part of...
The development, the definitive.
And I'm going to turn it over to Justin and ask him if we can make that motion. I don't, we're kind of, we're kind of mixing...
No, I think, first of all, it would be to approve the preliminary plan, not to accept it.
Yeah.
Section 12 talks about you making the decision at this stage of what you want to see at the definitive stage. So I don't think it would be unreasonable to make a decision now that you want to see a development impact statement at the definitive stage.
Okay, okay.
I think the way it would work is, they would have to put their cards on the table, as somebody said, and that would be, you know, subdivision is different than zoning, but you're going to approve a subdivision plan maybe based on something, and it's going to be conditioned on that something, right? So they would run the risk of presenting something to you that's not really what they wanted to do, in which case they'd have to come back to you. So I think the definitive plan, requiring the, the development impact statement on the definitive plan is certainly allowed, but it would give more information than you would normally have for a definitive plan.
Yeah. It, it's required, that we will do that in the future. And that puts, that would put an onus on whether it happens now, or three years from now, or whatever the timeframe is.
Within seven months.
The, the future board would still have to consent to have that definitive impact statement. So it becomes part of the property.
Now, having said that, I, you know, Carol, now that I think about it, maybe it is two separate motions, because you're accepting the plan, not on the condition, or, I'm sorry, you're approving the plan, not necessarily on that condition. So you're right, yeah. So I think it is two separate motions.
There are two motions?
You want to approve the plan, that's one motion, and if you want to make a motion now to determine you need that at the definitive plan, I think it's better as two separate motions. You convinced?
Okay, two motions, okay. Then, yeah. That's why we keep, yeah.
So I...
And I, I'm saying, I...
I want to get it right.
I'm going to word it this way. I haven't disagreed with anything anyone said, okay? And, and on both sides. And that's, we're a quasi-judicial board, and that's our, and that's our job, to listen to both sides, and then follow, then apply the facts to the law, both, as Sal said, state, local, and, and make a determination. So I, I'm going to make the motion to approve the preliminary plan, and then I'll make the second motion, if that, if that's second and passed.
No.
I'm, I'm going to do it. And so this is on, this is on the preliminary subdivision application for Orchard Hill Park Drive extension.
Right. Okay. I have a, do I have a second on that?
Paul, second.
Paul, second, okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Both say no. Motion carries.
Okay, then I'm going to make a, a motion that, at the, I don't know if I, at the time of the, if there's a submission of a definitive plan, that a development impact statement be, be submitted simultaneously or shortly thereafter. I don't know.
Or otherwise in connection with the definitive plan process.
As part of the definitive...
To include all of our regs.
Oh, yes. Well, that's given. Okay. And, so I have a motion made, do I have a second on that, Paul? Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. A third motion about that, that prior to a part of the development, that the proponent have a neighborhood meeting to discuss all the plans prior to present to, to the board.
Second.
Well, that's just a recommend, well, we just...
That's just a recommendation.
Recommendation.
Well, well, I don't reckon. Well, actually, you know, it's, it comes underneath the development impact statement when...
It comes on the impact statement, anyway. Okay, we'll just reiterate, we want to see that. Okay.
Are you going to do the same motion for that?
The second motion.
Well, we have to, he has to...
That's, that's...
All in favor say aye. No, we didn't. You made a motion, seconded.
What are we voting on here?
We voted on that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm on 4.2, preliminary subdivision, Pioneer Drive.
What's that?
Same motion on Pioneer Drive.
I, I make a motion to approve this preliminary subdivision plan for Pioneer Drive.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
And I make a motion that upon the submission of a definitive subdivision application for Pioneer Drive, that a development impact statement be filed in connection...
In conjunction, yeah.
With that plan.
I have a motion made and seconded on Pioneer Drive. Do I have any discussion?
Yeah, just, you know, just again, to add, add a note, a footnote to both of these, you know, procedure two under development impact states, statement, pot D says, the planning board requires that a citizen participation component be incorporated. And that's important, and we need that to happen. It's part of what's already in there, but let's just address it.
Okay, you're not voting on the board.
It's a conversation.
Thank you.
Conversation.
And we voted on that. Okay, we did vote on, okay, good.
No.
No, because it's part of the subdivision.
No, no. On your, on your second motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. New business, site plan application for 29 June Street, map 352, parcel 6, multifamily development. What's your wishes?
There were two waivers requested, remember?
One was landscape, was the other one?
Waiver.
Lighting.
Did we have some requests from...
To lower the poles.
Trees.
The trees.
Not having any trees, right? Soil treatment. Because it's all, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a comment, so that's also be, that's all part of Board of Health's concerns about, they've already done the...
His requirements they have to meet and get expected, right?
They're fairly, the requirements for tearing down a building are very precise for the Board of Health, and, and they're watched.
Can we ask, at least, can you have a conversation with the neighbors to see which trees they're talking about, so you have some idea of which ones that are...
Bill, it's the old growth, it's the big ones. You know, not the brush-in-between.
Right.
And that would be, that would be a beautiful thing. I'm sure Steve would, would agree with that.
Maybe sometimes you could coordinate that with...
Okay.
So, can I, can I make a motion to accept the waiver for the landscape plan? Is that one of them?
Yes.
2262.3.1.
Yes.
Okay. The motion made and seconded to accept a waiver on the landscape, landscape, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the waiver for the lighting, is that Elizabeth 22-58.6?
Correct.
Motion made and seconded to accept a waiver on the lighting. Any further discussion?
I...
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. On the plan with waivers.
I make a motion to accept, to approve the site plan application with any and all other conditions from the department heads.
And waivers.
And waivers.
No, it's already, they were already the waivers.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Special permit application for use of 29 June Street, map 352, parcel 6, multifamily development.
This may not be necessary, but I'll make the same motion to accept the, the two waivers. I'll do the first one, the landscape waiver.
Second.
Motion to accept a waiver on landscaping on, for 29 June Street. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to accept the waiver for the lighting under the special permit.
I have a motion made...
It's 29 New Lancaster, just for the record.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
No, this is Tuesday.
Yeah, we're doing site plan. We're doing the special permit.
Oh, got it.
No problem.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to, to accept and to issue the special permit for 29 June Street, with conditions from all department heads.
So, motion made and seconded to accept the 29 June Street with all conditions from department heads. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. Special permit application, water supply protection district, AD Peterson Street, map 548, parcel 1A, house in watershed protection. The only thing that I would add here, is seen as they're not going to pave that road, there's going to be a future, that a condition be that, at the, prior to pavement...
They take care, they also provide the drainage.
Yeah.
Under the water supply protection...
District.
Requirements.
Right.
That notes on the plan, yeah.
Yeah, it's noted on the plan, anyway, but...
We're going to just say it anyway.
But we have to condition it, so we have to say it. Okay?
I, I make a motion to issue that special permit... I, I make a motion to issue that special permit application for AD Peterson Street with that condition.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Site plan application for 29 New Lancaster Road map, 447, parcels 2E, professional office in Plankton.
Any waivers on that?
I, yes, there's a waiver, Elizabeth...
Again, landscaping.
Architect.
It's just a landscaping architect, it's not landscaping.
No, it's the plan.
Yeah, landscape plan.
It's the plan.
And I agree with Anthony, it doesn't really need a waiver, but that's how we've been doing it.
Right.
Not that that makes it right, but, so I make that motion, motion to accept that waiver.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to accept the waiver on the landscape plan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the site plan application for 29 New Lancaster Road with any conditions from department heads, but I don't think there are any.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Communication, city council petition 15-26, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the plan board requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to battery energy storage systems. New information has been received on the state level. Request a formal motion of plan board to withdraw their petition.
Yes, the state, the state issued more information and we're not ready yet.
Yeah.
So, so...
Second.
Yeah.
I have a motion made and seconded to withdraw the petition to the city council.
So that means that they can reapply any time without prejudice, right?
Yes.
And it doesn't do the two-year no-no thing?
No, no, we're withdrawing it, so it's...
No, okay, I'm good.
Any further discussion?
I don't think they've...
No, well, they have, but not around here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Miss Sterling has one.
Yeah.
And by the way, there was, went for a ride, Barry had, there was a demonstration on the battery, Barry Corman yesterday, against battery storage units.
Well, you know, that might, that whole industry is changing, and it might, might go away, you know?
Yeah.
Sort of like the, the soul of, you know, 36 acres, a soul...
Planning and development director's report for November 17.
Nothing additional.
Nice. No offense. Oh, metro to a jury.
Oh, no, wait a minute, we got one more thing.
No, we don't.
I gotta, I gotta put up...
You can't get on a plane and...
And rotary calendars are now available.
That's on your time.
Contact, cannot take about $25.
$25?
And they have all, yes.
It was only 20 bucks, and the pictures are worse.
All in favor say aye. Opposed say motion carries.